Hey, everybody. Welcome back to another edition of the Colonel and Community Connection. We are here again as June is the local elections month where everything is local. We try to talk to all the candidates so that you can get the knowledge that you need. Today, we have one of the nine candidates running for city council. His name's Tom Durham. He hails from Texas where he was born and then moved to Iowa at the age of nine. His formative years were done there and he actually went to Cornell College that is in Iowa, then transferred over after that to law school at NYU where he excelled. Started a law firm in Chicago, practiced for 35 years, and moved to Scottsdale. He served most recently as the treasurer of the Preserve PAC for the Proposition 420. And really interesting on the way of hobbies as he is a long-distance biker and has actually gone, and not the motorized one, but you know, the ones that you actually use feet to pedal. And he's gone around Europe a bit and participates in this biking thing across Iowa. I'll talk about that a little bit later with him. So I'd like you to welcome Tom Durham. Tom, how are you?
I'm good. I'm good. Happy to be here.
Fantastic. I'm happy to have you. Thanks for making time. So the way this works for the people out in the audience, we'll ask that you write in your questions or comments into the feed and Andy Gomez, my campaign manager, get them over here into the Zoom and by the magic of telecommunications here in the internets, we'll try to get them answered by Tom. If you'd help us out by putting a question mark in front of your question, that'll kind of help Andy see it and put it more so into the feed for us. I also want to say that Tom Durham does not endorse my candidacy, nor do I endorse his candidacy, but this is held as a community kind of knowledge dropper, right? We're trying to increase the amount of people who vote, but we're actually also trying to increase the people who vote intelligently. So we're giving you that forum today. I will ask questions of Tom than I ask most every other candidate. It's a conversation. We'll go in one direction or the other. This is not a gotcha session, so I won't try to get Tom, and Tom's not going to speak ill about any of his opponents because they're not here to defend himself. He's going to tell us all the good things about Tom Durham. So if you're ready to go, Tom, we'll get started.
Ready?
All right. And once again, my internet goes out. You go ahead and just talk amongst yourself. If you have multiple personalities, that shouldn't be too hard. But hey, so what makes you the candidate to take a spot on the city council? What makes you the person?
Well, I think my goals, main goals in running for the council is I want to be someone who is responsive to the citizens. Because what I've seen over the last few years, I think, is that the current council, there's a feeling among many citizens that the majority of the current council isn't representing what they view as the best way forward for Scottsdale. And I've seen that myself. I was very involved in the Protect Our Preserve movement. And when I got involved, I had a very strong feeling that the majority of people in Scottsdale didn't want the Desert Discovery Center. And that's why I became involved was because I thought that's what the community didn't want. And the council was very strongly supporting the Desert Discovery Center. And you know, I didn't follow the rule about you can't fight City Hall. And so I decided you could fight City Hall and I decided to do that. I decided to get involved and the rest is history. We were successful and we won in a landslide when the citizens actually got a vote on it.
Fantastic. And we'll have Andy put in the chat box there. If anybody wants to steal some more information, you can go to Durham For The Citizens, plural. DurhamForTheCitizens.com and people can get some information on you there. So you had a long kind of time in different places. What drew you to Scottsdale?
It's a little bit of a crazy story. I am on the board of trustees in my college, which is Cornell College in Iowa. And every year, we have a trustee meeting in January, early February. And we always do it someplace warm. We usually do it in Florida. But in 2013, we decided to do it in Scottsdale. And my wife came along. We came a day or two extra. And we went hiking in McDowell Sonora Preserve, tried out some of the good restaurants. And we were here like four or five days. And after four or five days, we kind of looked at each other and said, this place is cool. And literally on our way to the airport, go back home to Chicago, we started looking at open houses. We mapped out a couple of open houses and decided that we were going to move as soon as I retired. So within two or three months of that, we had a realtor hired. And within about five months, we had a contract to build a new house. And we never really looked anywhere else. We decided based on those four or five days that, you know, this is the best place you could live in the United States. And so we did it. We moved and haven't regretted it at all.
Fantastic. Well, welcome. And good to see you sticking your toes into the political theater, right? Make it happen. We have a question from Julie. She's asking, what do you feel are the top three issues that will bring Scottsdale forward? And she wants you to actually prioritize. But I'll just say, what top three issues do you think are out there that would move Scottsdale forward?
Well, I think the general plan is the first. It sounds kind of esoteric, but the general plan is sort of the rulebook for how we want to live in Scottsdale. And we haven't had a general plan amendment or a new general plan in a long time. We're supposed to have a new one every 10 years and we're way delinquent on it. And we need a new general plan. We need one with lots of citizen input because it is a roadmap for how we're going to live for the next 10, 20, 30 years down the road. It sets out priorities in terms of development. What kind of development do we want? Where do we want it? What kind of businesses do we want? And it sort of lines up how we want the future to look. Two of the things that I supported as part of the new general plan, the general plan has nine or 10 elements or something like that, which are sort of chapters about different parts of the city. And two things that I really want to add to the general plan is I want an element on education. And I want an element on healthcare because those are two very big industries in a way, if you will. And right now, the general plan doesn't address those. So I'd like to put those into the general plan. The second priority, as I've already mentioned, I really want to be focused on listening. What do the citizens want? What type of city do the citizens want? In the last two years, two or three years, we've had two very contentious fights. The first was over the Desert Discovery Center, which we had to go to, in fact, a referendum to overrule that. And the second was South Bridge, too, where once again, the council majority voted to support a project that many citizens didn't like. And once again, there was a referendum successful that would have put that on the ballot for next November. So I'd really like to avoid those types of things. We should have a council majority that listens to what citizens want, reaches out to them, and doesn't go down the road on these types of developments, which are unpopular. That's the second thing. The third one is something that's come up just in the last couple of weeks, and that's the ethics code. And I'm very concerned about some provisions of our ethics code, which allow council members to take large contributions from persons who have business before the city. And I don't think that's appropriate, that someone who has business pending before the city can make large donations to council members. I would like to see that stopped. So that's my third priority. I think that covers all three.
Well, you're a lawyer, right? It's been a long time. So I am not, but I do know that the Supreme Court has kind of ruled about political speech and money and all that kind of stuff. So I know that you actually have written a couple of columns, part one and a part two. Actually, people can see that in Scottsdale Independent if they want to. It's about city ethics code. How, what, I didn't read it. Full disclosure. I saw the title, but they have now limited me to five free articles.
Yeah, I know. I get the same problem now.
And you know what? I'll tell you, for me and the viewers out there, I think Scottsdale Independent does good work. I think they're a little lazy on some things, just like everybody else, but that's supply and demand with the money that they have. So I am going to subscribe because I think local news is really important, even if I don't agree with it. I think having that fourth estate is important. So I really would say to everybody else, if you've read the Scottsdale Independent, and they haven't paid me to say this, go ahead and, you know, put it in your six bucks a month.
Yeah, I'm going to do it.
Yeah. Good for you, Tom. Hey, but let me ask you. So is it what you're saying is they can take money, but they have to recuse themselves from voting on that business? Or you're saying no money at all?
Right now, you can take money from a person who's got a matter pending before the city. And it happens pretty often. And the council members do not recuse themselves when that happens.
So you're wanting recusal?
Well, I would prefer not to take the money in the first place or give it back and vote. But if you're going to take that money at a minimum, you ought to recuse yourself. I would prefer, you know, not taking money from somebody who's got business before the city.
How about like perhaps we have a badge that they have to wear like right on their shoulder? I was paid for by. That's just a joke. Hey, you mentioned one of your things about the general plan, and you want to add an education component. Mike wants to know what would your education plan call for?
Well, we don't have a lot, the city council doesn't have a lot of power over the school district. We can't fire or hire teachers. We can't fund the district. We can't set policy. We have really no real control. But what I would like to do is to sort of treat education as a very important industry, so to speak. It's one of our most important industries in that sense. And so I'd like to get a better sense of what assets do we have? You know, what schools do we have? Where are they? How are they organized? Where are they located? You know, are there areas that need more coverage, less coverage? That's really a school district issue, but it's something I think the city council can have some input into. And as Betty, and you had a good talk about this last night, there's lots of places where you can have collaboration on issues, such as sharing of assets, sharing libraries, sharing sports fields, things like that. There is room for greater collaboration between the city and the school district. And we ought to have figured out what assets do we each have that we can share with each other? I think that only makes sense.
Well, I appreciate that. And education is my sweet spot. I've been teaching for a long time. I think it's really important. Our state as a whole does a real disservice to our kids. Being that we do fund it so far below average, we have to work a little bit closer together with the city. And I actually have some ideas. I would encourage you to look up about community schools. Because when we have, you know, our lower income areas being served better, that actually works to enlarge the city in a way that really is vibrant. And it just gets the economy humming. You're absolutely right. Hey, Amy. Amy's asking, you were talking about citizens and how they get their voices heard in the current council or not, but what do you think you can do to best advocate for those citizens? How do you involve the voices?
Well, I would try to have more meetings with citizens, particularly when there's a big issue coming up. I would like to reach out, you know, take the temperature of people. I, you know, collected over a thousand signatures. And I did a lot of those myself. And so I had a lot of conversations with people in the process of doing that. I'd like to find a way to continue that if I get elected to, you know, find times to talk to ordinary people and, you know, have some people that I don't really know come in the backyard and have a few beers and talk about what they'd like to see.
Are you inviting me over for beer, Tom? What kind of beer will you be serving?
I like Sam Adams.
Very nice. American beer right there. I actually like a lot of different things in the can that they have at Costco with the mixed packs because I like to delve into different things. And then I got this little curling koozie that I put it in there to advertise myself.
One thing I really like, you can't get it here in the United States very much, is what they call Raddler in Germany, which is a combination of beer and what they call lemonade, which is, it's hard to describe exactly what it is, but it's kind of a sort of a seven-up Sprite kind of drink. So it's a very lemony beer, which is really great in the summer.
Hey, so one of the things that's kind of come through our city everywhere in the nation, the COVID, right? The coronavirus has going to put a real wrench into our economic scene. It has already. It will continue. My feeling is that the governor was doing a really fine job, listening to science and actually doing well. And then we had the brigade of people storming the Capitol demanding to get a haircut. And he seemed to kind of recoil like a turtle. And we are now in a situation where we're leading the nation in bikes. I find it troubling, but we do have to move on. Do you see the schools in the city working together for a COVID response, like a network? Or Mike's asking if the COVID-19 response networks for all of its schools? Oh, what do you think the city can do in a responsible manner, like to respond to outbreaks? And maybe even looking further than that, do you see a way for us to diversify our economy?
Are you talking about assisting the schools with COVID?
Yeah, Mike was asking about the schools again. You don't have to worry about that. If you're going to work on COVID, it should be with the Health Service Network, the schools, the police. I mean, everybody should be brought together in my mind.
We can buy some assets like PPE and, you know, those plastic barriers are the thing everywhere. You see them everywhere now. So the city might be able to be a resource for buying materials like that. We can possibly get a better deal than the school district can. So, and we can do that for other businesses too also. So that might be a way of buying those assets. About, there was a question out there also in there about the diversification of the economy.
Yeah, I kind of segued a little quick there, but you know, we rely on tourism. We have a really strong sales tax that comes from restaurants and the entertainment industry kind of stuff. How do you see, I mean, going forward, we're never going to be the same as we were before. How do you see Scottsdale growing and maturing in a way that keeps the budget kind of pumping and the way of life that we all know and love vibrant?
I think tourism is always going to be a huge thing here because we have the mountains, we have skies, we have spring training, we have golf, we have Barrett-Jackson, we have the Phoenix Open. We have so many assets that draw people here. And I don't think we should ever ignore that. Obviously, it took a terrific tumble at the beginning of the COVID, but I've been in the opinion that it may well come back faster than some areas. Because after this is all over, people are going to want to get out of their houses. And they're not going to go to New York. They're not going to go to Europe. They may want to drive someplace. And there are lots of places where Scottsdale is a drivable destination. In fact, it's part of the problem of the COVID spike you've mentioned is we have a lot of people coming in from Los Angeles. The minute our pools opened up, there were huge numbers of hotel reservations as people from Los Angeles started to come here to play in our pools. So I think tourism has a chance of coming back stronger. And in any event, it's sort of the goose that laid the golden egg in a lot of ways for us because it does support our tax base. So I want to see that continue. I think there are ways we can diversify into other areas. I think we're a great place for high tech. We're also a very good possibility for biotech. We're a great place to work from home, I think. One of the things I've been reading about is that people are not going to want to be in offices as much as they did in the past. So I think that there's much greater possibility that people are going to want to work from home. And if they're going to work from home, why not do it in Scottsdale, which is one of the most beautiful cities in the country? So I think that we have a lot of things going for us that are going to attract people here in the future and help to bring more people here to Scottsdale.
Nice. Again, we're talking with Tom Durham. He's running for city council, one of nine candidates. If you'd like to get some more information on him, go to DurhamForTheCitizens.com. And if you have questions, you can leave them into the chat. If we don't get to them, then Tom can always go through and answer them again, or you can reach out to him through his website. I'm sure he'd be happy to answer those for you then. Tom, one of the things that really gets me, and I talked to Betty about this and the other candidates, is I think Scottsdale has an issue with the Airbnb slash vacation rentals, right? And 2016, the majority party who's been in control forever kind of preempted and took away local control. And I think that's a real mistake. And I would say if I went back there and got in, that would be one of the first things I'd do is repeal that bill.
Yes.
Because I think Scottsdale and all other cities and towns in this state should be able to govern themselves and come up with the rules that they want for their citizens. Now, if that happens, do you see a way forward as you can kind of deal? I mean, well, what's your stance right now? Do you think there needs to be something done about the vacation rentals here in Scottsdale?
Yeah, I certainly do. I have certainly heard a lot of reports about party houses, houses filled up with huge numbers of people, noise late at night, a lot of open beer drinking, a lot of people cavorting.
Tom, you keep on going, Tom, you keep on going to the beer drinking. Is there a theme to our interview? Should I go get a cold one?
Oh, yeah, I'll do that one.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I really agree with you. I think it was, wasn't it Daniel Moynihan who said all politics is local, I think? And we ought to have control over our local issues. I think we ought to have more control over our local elections. B and B is a classic local issue because Tucson may have different issues and Flagstaff may have different issues and everywhere may have different issues. So to me, it's crazy that we can't deal with Airbnbs on a Scottsdale basis. That just makes no sense at all to me.
Is crazy. That's the word, I think. And Daniel Moynihan has one of my favorite quotes when he said, "You're entitled to your opinion, but you're not entitled to your own facts." And that is more true than ever. And people are taking a real leap with the entitlement they have with those facts. That is funny. Yeah, our current legislature, if I may, they kind of feel like they're Goldilocks here. That, you know, the federal government's too big and can't have any laws up there. And the local government's too small that can't have any laws down there. But they are just right. They are just right. Hey, what, so Amy's asking about the books on the shelf there. She notices, just as I had before we went on air, kind of outdoing me with the books on my shelf. She wants to know what you're reading right now.
What I'm reading right now is a fantastic book. It's the biography of Grant, Ulysses S. Grant, by Ron Chernow. He's the same guy who wrote the Hamilton biography, which led to, you know, the famous musical. He also wrote a great biography on George Washington. And right now, it's very apropos. I'm right in the middle of the section on Reconstruction. And I did not know a huge amount about the nitty-gritty of Reconstruction before reading this book. So it's very, very interesting to read how Grant tried to lead Reconstruction. He created a lot of the laws. I became familiar with this lawyer, the Ku Klux Klan laws, civil rights laws following the 13th, 14th, and 15th Amendment, and all of the obstacles that were thrown in his way. And it's very interesting reading because, you know, one of his great strengths as a general was he never stopped. You know, he found his enemy and he kept attacking and attacking and attacking. And then when he tried that as president, he found out it doesn't work. You know, you can attack a senator, but so what? He'll still vote against her. And that's a lot of what happened is he created a lot of enemies during Reconstruction because he used, he had the same attitude as he did as a general. He just kept fighting and it created a lot of enemies. So.
He was drunk, right?
You know, it's very, he was. He was, you know, clearly he was an alcoholic. There's no question about that. But he, for most of the period, he had an amazing amount of self-control. What he tended to do was especially when his family was gone, which happened for some long periods in his life. There were times when he was away from his family for years at times. And he would drink. And he would drink a lot. He was actually thrown out of the army for drinking because he couldn't stop drinking. And during the Civil War, he had a guy constantly by his side named John Rollins, who was like a hawk on the drinking. And he never drank when it was time for a battle or close to a battle. But after the battle was over, he often did start drinking. And he was one of those guys who, when he started, he literally couldn't stop. So, but he had a huge amount of self-control to do what he was able to do, win a war and lead the country through some pretty tough times. So it's a very interesting story about his drinking. And this book really goes into it in some detail. It's a very good book. I would really highly recommend it to anybody.
Okay, so generally, we're going to go to the game pretty soon. But I do want to get this one question in because speaking of Ulysses S. Grant, he kind of came out and you said something very interesting that when you have those enemies on the battlefield, it doesn't work in politics. You can't afford to have those enemies. You have to build coalitions. Even when you are not liking somebody, you have to be respectful. I believe fully in that. And I think we're now living in a time where we have gotten a little bit overboard in the way we treat each other through online comments. It's so easy to click enter. I know I've been guilty of it in the past and I've really tried to do better. And gosh darn it, I have. And that's for my campaign manager. But I do want to ask you a serious question because she's got a point. And I know this Andrea Alley, she asked, and I know that, you know, you were all working together at one point and then things happened, but I think it's a rather good question. She says she's seen where you claim that you won't rely on the developers or city studies to inform your decisions on future development because they're slanted in favor of the developer. But she really wants to know if you won't rely, and that might not be true. You might want to clear that up. But she's saying, if that's the case and you won't rely on professional studies, what will you rely on to inform these critical decisions?
Well, it's not true that I wouldn't rely on professional studies. I think that came up, and I remember seeing it in a Facebook post, if someone said characterize that as studies done by the developers. And no, I'm not going to rely on a study done by developers. I will read it and, you know, take advantage of what knowledge is in there. But, you know, I dealt with a lot of experts during my years as a lawyer. And there's a lot of experts out there who don't know what they're talking about. So I would take, if an expert was hired by a developer, what I'd do is cross-examine is what I'd like to do and say, okay, you said on page 17, you said there would only be 500 cars a day. Did you account for this? Did you account for that? Did you, you know, did you consider the extra amount of cars that would be caused by this project? So I would prefer objective studies, not ones that come from the developers. If a developer gives me a study, I'll look at it and I'll try to figure out how much it's worth, whether it's accurate, whether it's not accurate. You know, there's an old saying that the greatest engine for truth engine for truth ever invented is cross-examination. And that's sort of what I would do with a, with a report that came from a developer.
Yeah, did they say that over at, uh, that Scottsdale event for Cornell College back in 2012, was it? What about the part where she says, um, what about the, she says, "You won't rely on city studies"? That, that's not, is that accurate?
No, no.
Okay, well, she probably has some follow-ups. You can have that conversation. I think it's really important, um, because I see some strong allies in this city as we go forward, uh, and in this state. I think when people are passionate and committed, that perhaps they get, um, a little bit set in their ways, but there's still something there that we can all kind of harness and work together. And 420 definitely shows me that's the case.
Regarding the city studies, I would like to make one point, which is, on both the Marquee and the South Bridge project, the city staff actually said, hey, these projects are way too big. They're too massive, they violate some of our rules, which is called the Urban Design and Architectural Guidelines. And the city staff actually said that, and the council ignored the staff. And I, I think the staff was right. And if I were on the council, I would have listened to the staff. But, uh, and one, you know, I'm not supposed to talk about other people, but one of them said, well, that's just one person's opinion, but it's, it's your staff's opinion. And so listen to your own staff.
Yeah, and I think, uh, I, you know, and I think there's a lot of people that work in government that aren't elected, that are much better than the people elected. They're actually civil servants, right? They're civil, and they're serving. Uh, I think we need to give them deference sometimes in their capacity. Hey, so let's have a little fun. First of all, as I'm getting my little questions together, what was the most distance you've ever traveled on your bike? Take these long bike rides. How, how long was the one that you might have gone on?
I think the longest one I ever did was I did the, um, the ride across Spain, the pilgrimage, the name escapes me at the moment. Santiago de Compostela. It's, it's a very famous pilgrimage from the Middle Ages, which goes from the French border and the Pyrenees all the way over to the Western border, to Santiago de Compostela, where allegedly the bones of St. James, I guess.
We, we can wait. I'll, you go ahead and take that. I will start explaining the game. Tom's got a call, okay? This is his call. He usually sets things up to where he's really getting bored. He says, "Call me at 5:32 and get me off this Zoom." Yeah, that's a smart man. Okay, we're gonna get to the game.
That was the longest one ever that I've ever done. It was about, I think it was around 700 miles, and it was over the space of two weeks. And it was along a famous pilgrim route, as I say, from the Middle Ages, where pilgrims would, this was, um, a rite of passage for pilgrims to make this trip to Santiago de Compostela, where their sins would be forgiven and their, uh, health issues would be cured and everything. So it was a very, it was a very cool trip, and it was, was quite a bit of spirituality along the way. You have to, you start it, you get a passport, and you have to have the passport stamped every day as you pass through all these little towns. And then at the end, you get a decree that you have traversed the, that, that, another name of it is the camino, uh, which is, I think, the Spanish word meaning of the way. That was the longest one.
That is really, uh, really cool. That's, that's very, I got a lot of jokes about that, but I'm not gonna, because you mentioned the spirituality part, and now I can't go into it. You know, say like 700 more miles, you might have been crowned a given sainthood, but okay. Are you ready to play? I, I, I tried to come up with a fun little game for everybody. And, and it is fun. I'm not here to try to, to get you here, but I, I came up with a list of favorite Toms and Thomases. So if you're gonna be elected as, in the city council, you will be a famous Tom. Before that, you're just Tom Durham. Let's go to some famous Toms. I'll give you some hints, and you'll see if you can name them. Here we go. Put them in and on the board. So this guy, uh, has won six Super Bowls with the Patriots and actually just signed with the Tampa Bay Buccaneers.
Tom Brady.
Very good. This guy, when dancing in his underwear, slid into the room with one of his first real movies that broke the mold.
Tom Cruise.
Excellent. This guy, uh, one of my favorite actors, he actually was in Big, and he's got such range. He started off on television on Bosom Buddies, and then, oh, you already know, the Philadelphia Story. What's his name?
Tom Hanks.
Okay. I had a man crush on this guy. He was Magnum P.I., did his thing in Hawaii. Nice mustache.
Yeah, oh, Tom, uh...
Wore the Detroit Tiger cap in that. Tall, drink of water, handsome.
Yeah, I, I know exactly who you're talking about.
Okay, anybody out there now? Yep, Tom Selleck, somebody got it out there. Okay, this is, uh, this is a freebie for you, basically. The principal author of the Constitution with the big signature.
That's not a Tom. Oh, oh, the Constitution?
Yeah, it could be a Thomas, Tom or Thomas. So, uh, no, I'm sorry, I was thinking about Hancock, never mind. So this Thomas, was the, was the principal author of the Constitution, wasn't the big signature on the bottom. But he, he, Monticello, I think, was this, his residence?
Thomas Jefferson actually was not around for the Constitution. He was over in, he was over in France. You were thinking of John Hancock. But Thomas Jefferson, of course, was the author, along with Benjamin Franklin and John Adams, to a lesser extent, of the Declaration of Independence.
Declaration of Independence, I'm sorry, I said the wrong thing. You are absolutely correct. All right, put an extra point on Tom's column and take one away from Eric. Okay, this guy sang, uh, he, he was like, uh, from the seventies, he sang, he says, "Not unusual to be loved by anyone." Tom Jones, yep, very good. Let's, uh, see your musical range. This guy, this Tom, his band that backed him was called The Heartbreakers.
Tom Petty.
Excellent, wow. All right, let's go into sports. A famous Dallas Cowboy coach. Seventies and eighties, wore the hat, really stoic, marched to the sideline in a suit.
The first football games I ever saw were the two Green Bay games, Dallas Cowboys against Green Bay back in 64, 65. So it's Tom Landry.
Awesome. Okay, last one before we wrap up. Along in sports, about the same time, this guy, this little round guy, Italian guy, was the big, uh, coach for the Dodgers for years and years.
Tom Lazor.
Excellent. All right, Tom Durham, thank you so much for joining us and answering all the questions. You didn't take a pass. Uh, Tom's one of nine candidates running for the council. Tomorrow night, we are going back to discussing COVID. We have an emergency doctor and chief trauma surgeon, uh, Dr. Kabe N'Chafi. And that's five o'clock. And then Friday, we wrap up the week with another council candidate, um, and also a bike rider, has a mustache, John Little. So a lot of things going in common, facial hair and the bike riding. So you got a lot in common. So Tom, thank you very much for joining us, and, uh, good luck to you on the campaign trail.
Thank you, thank you, Eric.
Bye.